Yeah.
Yeah. It's a nice city, it's a beautiful city, it's got rough areas.
I don't know if that ever happens.
Great, so it has new spots, I guess.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Everybody.
I think it's.
Oh.
Very, very smart. There's Larry on Zooms.
Yeah.
Participants want.
That's us, right?
Yeah, that's us. Did he get a, did he get an email with the link?
No.
And who didn't email him the link? He doesn't leave one, because it's all in a chat on.
Yeah, so I don't do that. But he might not know to put on that. I can text on him and say, are you commenting? Yeah.
You got a good move. Just tell him that the link is right on the website. And we'll start regardless. That'll be. Doesn't matter. All right, folks, we're calling any order from. It is, uh, seven oh two PM and I call the, uh, December third, recording planning board meeting before all the last would pledge release. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, you have the amendments.
Yeah.
Last one.
Yes.
All looking at us over the bowl call, we have with us this evening Kim Burke Cameron, she is the select board liaison, Sharon Greer, she is the planning board secretary, uh, Aaron Ian. Larry Rawls is in Texas and may be signing in, John Rapp to my right. Look at us. Those are out. Oh, it's a.
No, I got, well, we didn't make it. I was gonna do it.
I swear. So while you're, uh, while you're doing that, um, at the last planning board meeting, we were asked or we were discussing the situation where there's a deed restriction on property and somebody wants a subdivision deed restriction or some other type of deed restriction. So I reached out to, um, NHMA and Christine Johnson came back and said, there's no single answer to that question in most general terms. A deed restriction might be released by the party who benefits from it. And it is usually accomplished by recording a notarized document that formally releases the property from the restriction. However, while it may be possible to theoretically to remove the deed restriction, the practical answer may be less straightforward. The length of time it will take, how much it will cost, and what various documents need to say, or whether a court needs to be involved will depend upon the facts and circumstances of each specified situation. The simplest case is one where, where the restriction was created to benefit one other party and that party is named in the deed as the person with the legal right to enforce the restriction. That person has the legal ability to live the restriction and can do so by recording a document that formally releases the property from the restriction that was in the original deed. This presumes, of course, that the party is still alive or in existence and that they agreed to release the restriction, either in exchange for payment or out of the goodness of their heart. This occasionally also happens when there is some kind of easement burdening a piece of property, such as a conservation easement. And the owner negotiates an amended amendment to the easement to relax a restriction. A more complicated situation is one where a developer places restrictions on all the lots in the development. Depending on how things are structured, the right to enforce these restrictions may belong to the developer or a homeowners association or to all of the other property owners in the development. It might be necessary to get every one of those owners consent to release any sort of restriction. There are also situations where it's unclear who, if anyone, has the right to enforce the condition. Perhaps the deed doesn't clarify this point, or the original enforcement party has attempted to transfer their rights to someone else. Or perhaps the owner is unable to get all the other parties to agree. In those cases, it is most likely that the affected owner would need to file a quit title suit in the superior court to try to have the restriction lifted. Whether such a suit would be successful would depend exactly on what the original deed said, whether the restriction was intended to benefit a particular person or another specif- specific piece of property or pieces. What has happened in years since that deed was signed and many other factors. So I strongly suggest the property owner find an experienced real estate attorney to speak with, that's the only way to have a real idea of what is possible to lift the deed restriction. That covers that, alright. First order of business is Mr. Andy Clifford for finalization. Andy, come on up. Now, look, we're in front of a lot of people, so make this good.
I have the MyLife.
This is the final.
You wanna see the MyLife list?
We'll pass that around some of the MyLife's.
Everyone wants to see that.
Okay. Alright, Clayton has the bar, the house and the garage on here with driveway as a pool. John, I don't think you were here for the plug.
I wasn't.
Last meeting, okay. And that's a certificate of appointment.
Absolutely.
How many stoppings do you have?
I actually have five more.
Yeah.
How many would be like?
We need. Two. Two.
Okay. I've, I've, I've got them, I'll cut back as many as you want.
Three, we need three.
We need three, I have to sign my life.
Yep, so you need three more?
No, we just need two more.
Two more. Larry's there. Ian?
This was just a small annexation for the drive.
Right, yeah. Larry, can you hear me? You're muted and no video. Which is fine. Can you unmute?
No, so everything looks good to me with that. This, we just need the copy for our time, the copy for our final.
Well, I don't figure it out. I found some. I thought I heard something.
No.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, will you hold on for this?
We should stick a little bit to the, one of our rocks.
Yeah, absolutely.
I give that to Sharon to do. I'm gonna attach this to one of our cards.
Okay.
Are we passing MyLife on the sun? Um, depends, please, ready?
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a, well, go ahead, make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve, I don't have it, let me see what it is.
Go back there.
I make a motion that we approve the annexation for a lot line adjustment for Tepper, Hammond, and Post, and Andrew and Kelly Clifford. All in favor?
Aye. Okay, so on that vote, that's Aaron, myself and Kim, and John has to stand because he was here. Oh, the voice, huh? Yeah, planning, we have to sit for both, I believe, is the, I would say. I put that certificate inside the wall with the other two copies.
I think that's something that's moved this, and we'd have to look at our policies.
Andy, thank you.
Thank you, I'll get it recorded.
Yep. As a woman, I believe, you guys also, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we're, we're gonna talk, uh, as a board about, uh, CIP and about the GMO. I would like to explain to the public and be a public forum at this point, because when we start to dig into the documents, you can dig into the, to that and then, but answer some questions from the folks first that they have. Thank you all for coming out this evening, it's awesome to see everybody. So what we're doing is where we have worked on for the last year, a year and a half, we've worked on a master plan. When we came out of the master plan, it was very obvious that the public's desire and the majority of the people that responded to the survey as well as the public meetings and everything else that we did, the majority of people would like to keep Croden's small role, keep the taxes reasonable. So in order to fulfill that, that desire of the community, we could do that one of two ways. We could attempt to zone differently than we do today. We could attempt to increase lot sizes, which than what we have today, and we could look at increasing or shortening road funding. We did that already. We put those things in front of the voters in March of this year and those things were soundly rejected. Nobody wanted to go to five acre lots and no one wanted to reduce road funding. So the planning board then gets put in a position where in order to fulfill the desires of the community, what can we put in front of the voters that can achieve that goal and maintain a steady, slow, affordable tax rate and growth for the, for the town? Well, so there's one other thing we can do, and that's called a growth management ordinance. And in order to have a growth management ordinance to be voted on, the town must first adopt two things, a master plan, which we did, we already got that accomplished. Find that right online on the, um, on the town website. The second thing we need to do is to establish a capital improvement plan. What a capital improvement plan is for a very small little town like ours, is basically takes the next five years and tries to guesstimate what the expenses and the purchases would be, not expenses, what the major capital purchases would be for the town. Now, this is just for the town, this does not include school stuff. This is, this is a town ordinance, it doesn't involve the school district and what their tax policies or, or, or tax situations are. And, um, considering that the school district was just awarded one point one seven six million dollars to build facilities, thanks to Aaron and the rest of the board, um, that is pretty cool. So the capital improvement plan is a document, looks much like this document here. And this is just a document that says what the town might do. This is not passing stone, this is not something that you can read in here and say, oh, wow, the transfer station wants to spend eighty thousand dollars. That's not, that's just in the plan. And the plan means that the plan is fluid, so these are legitimate expenses that the town has done in the past. This is nothing unusual. Dump trucks, four by fours, wheelers, I, I, exaggerate, but this is, this is as an example, town buildings, paint the town hall, improve building insulation, update electrical system. Those are all things that have been on the list, but the select boards kick down, you know, kick hand down the road, eventually those things will need to be done, but when it's documented, it's in front of everybody in that way that we don't forget about. Because the last thing we wanna do is you don't wanna, you don't wanna have a building that goes, uh, that goes to disarray because it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars to fix. So you wanna be able to plan for these things. Um, as an example, the transfer station, we need to replace the hopper at some point. This is on a priority of three, which basically means out there somewhere in the future, not a priority for today, um, that's twenty thousand dollars. Maybe improvements to the demo dumps, um, purchase, purchase a scale. Maybe we get to a point where the sea and the construction degree is, is lucrative for the town to purchase a scale and actually weigh it with the grid and charge me. Again, not passing stone. The other things that have to be on here are fire department, a police department, we don't have a town fire department, we don't have a town police department. So both of those things basically say that our Croden is a volunteer fire department and capital expenses are provided by the fire department. They're not, they're not our issues, so they don't need to be in the report, but we call them out so that there's someday, we need to revise the report, we can. Um, police department, same thing, conservation committee, that's in there, and they were just formed, really just formed this year, even though the town was offered it decades ago. Um, so there's no real budget item for them right now, because this is a living document, just like the master plan and just like the growth management one. They're living documents, so the planning board can update these documents once a year, and that's the standard operating procedure for towns who have capital improvement plans, is to revise these every year. And you revise them by working with the budget committee, coming up with what's gonna fall, what are these, these things that we need that are gonna fall into this year's budget? While we think we can afford this and we think we can afford that, this one's too expensive, we need to book that, that type of management, managerial stuff. What that does is that helps control the tax rate, they keep the tax rate as flat as possible, so that the tax rate grows like this and the tax rate doesn't grow like this. And if you look at Croden's past history, we've had taxes as low as fifteen or eleven dollars, as high as twenty, nineteen. I saw it, I went, ooh, nineteen fifty-six. So capital improvement plan basically shows the purchasers of each of the departments. Highway department's on here quite lengthy, because there's a lot of items that the highway department utilizes, but it's also, now, there's a road plan. So road plan shows that when do we have to repay in lower hell, when do we have to resurface through in Brook Road? When do we have to repay this, when do we have to grade this, when do we have to do this? Now, we actually have the numbers of what that costs, it's specified by, and it's specified plan, that this budget committee and the select board could use this tool to plan and set the budget for each year, and they can schedule these things out so that they're affordable and they're not one-time, one-time based. Now, they may take a look at all of the paving of our roads, Ashley, uh, they're all going to prefer, right lane, I think, or excuse me, right road. So you could look at these roads, you could say, you know what, one's doing three years, one's doing four, one's doing two, why don't we do these all in three and do a bond and do them all at the same time, get four, go be able to get the best price of paper, to be able to get the best price for the labor. Maybe it's an economic advantage right now, interest rates will go, we should do that. This tool gives the people, uh, on the select board the ability. And that's what the requirement is, because the growth management ordinance, which is the next goal, growth management ordinance is designed to level development, level ability. So if we look at what the true meat potatoes of what this ordinance does, and I know there's a lot of Google bookings, that's as I were saying, it's the stuff that has to be in here, but you, you built it through all the Google. What the, what the planning board thinks would be the best, slowest, but reasonable growth town is eight building permits. And I said, oh, eight, that's a lot. Well, in twenty twenty, the town issues, issued four. In twenty twenty-one, six, twenty-two, six, twenty-three, six, twenty-four, nine, twenty-five, nine. Then we put a moratorium in so that we could get this east dock on front of the photos. Whole point, moratorium that everyone voted on last year was to put everything on pause. That ends at the night of the election. Moratorium is normal. If the town voters do not approve the capital improvement plan, which basically is going to warrant, will basically say, does the town of Croden authorize the planning board utilize a capital improvement plan and the select board will follow, something to that effect. You're giving planning board permission to institute the restrictions on the select board that'll require under a capital improvement plan. It basically says, guys, you need to follow this plan, alter it, which the system, the process that you're gonna use is gonna be based like this. So it's gonna come from the budget committee to the planning board, planning board's gonna update, you have an improvement plan, it's gonna be passed to select board, they're gonna make decisions on what's bought, what's not bought, and then they're gonna make decisions on what changes the priorities state, how does the priority still change? As an example, we might have a grater that's due in, in twenty twenty-eight, we ordered it in twenty twenty-six. The dump truck breaks down, the ten wheeler breaks down, we gotta buy one right away, we haven't ordered the grater yet, but we can live with the grater we have for another year. Now, we push greater out and pull a dump truck in. That's what the capital improvement plan allows everybody to see all of those expenses, so that the select board isn't sitting there blind saying, oh, well, we're gonna buy the grater, let's just buy the grater, or wait, the dump truck's broke, well, we didn't know that, but we're gonna buy the grater. Causes tax fights, because now you're gonna do an emergency fund, we're gonna spend money that we didn't plan to spend, and it causes the tax rate to spot up. So the capital improvement plan has to be voted on first, to be the first one up. Capital improvement plan is approved by the voters, they can now go and vote on the growth management. I'll just talk about the growth management. Like I said, the suggestion of the planning board is to allow eight building permits.
Single family.
Single family halls, okay, new styles. This does not include eighty uses, it does not include barns, projects, anything else you wanna build on your property, it's not a single family hall. Because in the town of Croden, you're only supposed to have one single family hall. So there's no restrictions on any of that building, uh, build as many eighty uses you want, as many garages as you want, cars, doesn't matter. It's a single family home hall and two places. Okay, so building permits in our town are single family homes and more, two places, or all family, all of them, all we buy are all of them. Um, so eight building permits. Six of them, the first six are on a first come, first served basis, because if you look at the data, it shows that people apply for them all throughout the year. Two of them will be done by lottery. Town has to consider that there could be a rush on building permits. And that would eliminate people that go about how it may go or may not, so in August, the select board will look at the, will look at how many building permits to finish. If less than six building permits to finish, and there's no applications in the file for a building permit, then there's no lottery. Anybody can come in and get one, there's two more left in the year. However, if all six building permits go in the first two months of the year, the select board could, if applications keep building up. Remember, last year we only had nine, year before that, six, six, six and four, so chances of a rush, I would say, are pretty slim, but you need to make amends for that. So if you had a rush, and you got through all six building permits in the first two months, and the select board made a decision that there's ten building permits in file, there's no way, we're only gonna issue two more this year, they could do the lottery that selected based on those, and then the other people would go into the file for next year on a first come, first served basis, they have their four, and you go forward. So that's what will control the growth, for all the taxes, for all the number of students in the schools, it will level the planning. But it's changeable. So this ordinance has to have a sunset date, has to end. So it's in here to end in twenty thirty-nine? Or twenty, twenty thirty-nine?
Twenty, I thought it was twenty three.
Twenty thirty-nine? Um, sunset, well, I was saying, it's not, there's the one person that. Sunset, uh.
Twenty thirty-nine.
Twenty thirty-nine, after twenty thirty-nine.
Or unless sooner changed, canceled or extended.
The voters are the only people to change the book. So if the town feels that eight is not sufficient and that we should be at ten or twelve, because we've got a water running down, uh, down on the highway now, we hook up houses easily, if school is, is missing, needs students and there's not enough students in the school, that's a possibility, and, and so there's room in the school, only that tax rate. So let's build twenty more, have to go to. It's your control, it's not a select board, it's not the planning board, this is, this document is the town's document, it's your document that you asked for, it'd be input and, and it's also the master. And that's pretty much what we've been working on for the last year, and it's entirely up to you guys. If you pass the capital improvement plan and you don't pass the growth management ordinance, it's not the end of the world, because the capital improvement plan will be a good tool for the select board to use. But you won't. But you won't control develop, and you won't control growth. And if that, if you sit there and you say, well, that's a problem for me, because what if I can't build a house, or what if I can't sell a piece of land, or what if I can't, what else are a lot, a lot of what else? But there is a very distinct what is going to happen. That is, Sullivan County will see growth over the next decade. And Representative Damon's here tonight, I'm sure she could speak to it, where you're talking with numbers that are double digits close to thirty percent growth. And that will happen in a town who is about to publish a tax rate of eight dollars in that eight. Probably the lowest in state. And that was attributed to a great budget committee, a great school board, a great select. So, on a personal note, all the bullshit online needs to end. Because it's an eight-hundred-person town. And everybody that sits up here cares about the tax rate, about affordability. And I wouldn't have done all the work over the last tough couple of years if I didn't care about that, that taxes need to be affordable for our people. I can afford higher taxes, most of Croydon do not. That is why this is so. We're gonna grow the base families here, we wanna keep our lands home, we wanna keep the town at a steady growth rate. Your growth management ordinance will allow you to do that. And I ask that, um, will be, the student visas finalized, we'll get them published on the website so you guys can read them. Get all the Google Book. And then, um, if you believe in it and you think it's the right decision to make. Then please tell your friends to come and vote for it, because information tends to have dynamic change in town. And these documents are very specific. Very, very specific. It's eight homes here, six coming to build, two by lottery. That's the only information that should be out there. That's the only restriction that's in this document. Questions?
Yeah.
So there's no change in subdivisions and how many or probably small subdivision blocks.
No changes to subdivisions whatsoever? Nope. You can build, you can put a subdivision in for fifty homes if you want. You'll be in the lottery. Give the lottery to bill.
Just can't build on it right now.
But you can subdivide and sell, and it should not hurt the value of the property or the subdivision value.
It's just how many good.
Correct. 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 And if you, if you come in and you get a building permit, and August comes. And no one has taken the last two building permits, they're up by lottery, there's no applications in the folder. You could put in for a second building permit that year, there's a provision in here for that. You could potentially get two if you were a developer subdividing them. But we have to keep it fair for everybody. Aaron, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to add one detail here, I think's relevant, is, um, we, in this ordinance, we, there's also a provision that if you don't, you're not all eight. The leftovers carry over to the next year. Um, and it'll cap out at twelve, so you can never go over twelve, but it'll allow a little bit up and down. And smooth things out over the years, because you might get a spike to ten one year, and then it might be down at five or six another year.
And also for emergency purposes. In other words, if somebody, if somebody has some type of an emergency, a natural disaster to their home. That building permit is not happening here. So that building permit is, is absolutely neutral.
Right, so it's two, so we, we use two examples in the ordinance. One is the fire, obviously. And then two is a disability. So what happens if you get into an accident and you have to rebuild your home? You get a building permit for that. Um, so, that would not be part of our pay comp. Any other questions?
So a duplex is one permit.
Right.
And then it's, right, we've got.
Already finding a loophole. Yes, that is, that is a loophole in the ordinance, but it is. Not a loophole, it's a stew, stew, stewed off sauce.
I wasn't object.
I'm not gonna object here either, this is one building, that's what I care. Any other questions?
Are we only doing building permits for dwellings still?
Nope. I think we have, that's a select board question, that's not me question.
So, the zoning ordinance does not state that the building permits are for dwellings only. I don't know where that ever came from, but the zoning ordinance, it's not in the zoning ordinance that you only need a building permit if it's dwellings. So, no, we are not doing building permits for dwellings only. The only way that we can get a site plan where it actually shows where you are from your setbacks. Is if somebody brings in a building permit for anything so that we know where you're going to place it. Without a site plan, we don't know if you're thirty-five feet from your lines, your setbacks.
The answer's no. Any other questions?
Sorry, it was a little bit more detailed than a no.
Well, no, it should be, I'm just, I'm summarizing.
Yes.
Concerns? This is a great time because it, it, we really, we're really looking for input, that's why I invited you guys. Because, you know, it, it's very disheartening to work on something for two years and then come to, I mean, and say, well, you never told us, you never said about that. It's important, um, to make sure that all questions are answered, concerns are, are addressed. Because concerns are valid. And, yeah, go ahead.
So I'm curious, thinking you've mentioned it on my, what is kind of process that can be now marched? Further address question for publicize this so that it can be.
Yeah, so, that's a great question, Amanda. So first, the first thing is, that process is tonight to finalize these documents that we've all worked on. Um, Aaron had to do some stuff for the budget committee and get the numbers into these documents. And I needed the tax rate tables, and we needed some dramatic corrections and some other stuff, but done all of that. They're now ready to go to the attorney. Um, so once they go to the attorney and the attorney comes back and approves them, the drafts will go on the website. So I anticipate getting that done within the next two weeks. So that there'll be at least two to three weeks where the drafts are on the website for the public hearing. So the first public hearing will be in early January, correct?
Yep.
Okay, early January, giving us enough time to have a second public meeting if a bunch of people come in and say, um, you know, we don't like this, and we don't like that, and demand a change. The board isn't inclined to make any changes from the public hearing, or inclined to hold the public hearing. But there are cases where, uh, the public has come in and actually made a suggestion that was, was important. And, and it was necessary to change the documents at that second. This is one of the reasons why I wanted to have this meeting tonight and get some folks here is to talk about these things. And, um, and to have people start to chat around. So that in the next couple of weeks, when these things pop up online, um, we'll have them on the front page of our website. So two buttons for that. Say growth management CIP, like that, and then be able to go to pages. I would encourage people, um, to reach out to, um, to the town, to me, to somebody. If you see something in those documents that you just don't like, or a rule that you don't like, so they, either can be explained and/or, um, we can change it before the public. When we finalize the talk.
Speaking about growth finance, uh, how do you understand that?
Oh, sure, last year, that, that has nothing to do with this. Last year, the planning board, um, supported two, um, petition warrants. One was to, to increase the three-and-a-half acre minimum want size to five. And to decrease the two-hundred, uh, foot road fundage to a hundred and forty?
No, it was, uh, to a hundred and fifty, seventy-five, yeah.
That change?
No, no. Those all stay the same. So the voters reject, yeah, the voters rejected it, so it was, we, one of the things the board will not do is we're not gonna, we don't. Once something's rejected by the voters, we're not bringing it back again.
Yeah, no, I just didn't understand that.
Because it's, we, we've heard from the voters, voters will. And, and so the, the GMO, if this, just so that everybody understands, you can pass the capital improvement plan. But the growth management ordinance will not be back. This, this is either both coordinated or it's gone. Because you can't, we could bring it up every single year, but I doubt, I don't think that our job is the sales, we're not, we're not, we're not salesmen up here. We're presenting what the town wanted from the master plan. If now the fifty to seventy people plus, how many people do we have responding to service?
Over a hundred.
Over a hundred, so, yes, if a hundred and fifty people, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good reading of, of our town. So if now we put, you know, two hundred people in the room, and two hundred people, you know, two hundred people vote no, they vote no. And then development goes. It is what it is. Yes.
So what happens if someone comes to the, to the, to the.
I'm trying to make someone pass what.
Larry, you're here.
Uh, I, I can hear you, but I can't see you.
Okay, well, that's okay. We're in the middle of a question right this second, so hang on.
Yeah.
We don't allow, six or ten meter old three houses, we don't allow.
This is not change that.
Um, I, uh, no. I, I, we don't have a plan in front of us, so, but I could comment to say, I don't have a plan in front of us. We don't have anything in the books, and nothing was put in, so.
How is this, from other. Oh, proximity, like, or, but also other conditions are sized that, like, over us, but are also.
So, Newport is seeing an explosion of development. They're seeing a lot more than nine building permits. Ocean, Unity, all, all of those have us seeing an increase in, um, the building permits period. So, how we. Unity's in the growth spur. Um, we have a, we have a sixty-six percent increase in growth from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-five.
That is, uh, substantial.
Correct.
It is not invalid, but it's not.
Well, here's, right, and, but the, but the problem is that Croydon as a community. If you add, if, if new people come in next year and want building permits. That's fifteen houses, that's seven kids. Roughly. That's two hundred thousand dollars in taxes. Less the taxes that you collect on the house. Taxes are going up by a dollar for every fifteen homes. Year over year over year. So, your other problem that we have, which is more important than any of that, is your volunteer fire department's almost at max now. So if we don't, we don't curvature this, the town will have no choice but to spend money to help Croydon Village Fire Department expand their services. They can't do it on their own, they don't have enough, you know, they don't have enough financial to do that. So, you add fifty or sixty homes over the next ten years. Um, that's gonna be, that will be an issue either way. But this takes the man down the road a while.
Chairman Morgan?
Yeah.
Um, beyond the fact that more development, we're at the point where there's not a lot of road cradges on existing roads. So you would have development that would be going in and creating roads, which the town would then have to accept as a town maintained road. And that would increase your highway budget.
Right.
So, if you have a large development of twenty homes, they're gonna put in a road. Which means we are going to maintain it with all of the costs that go along with that.
It's not in place to say that if they did that, that their responsibility would have hurt.
Nope, subdivision regs that are in place since nineteen seventy-five say no private roads.
So we haven't thought that. No. Would there be a positive to changing that, like to make it not happen, it happen?
So, so the problem, if you're, that's a situation where you're cutting your nose off just by your face. Because if you allow subdivisions on private roads, they're gonna go in. And they're not gonna be up to the EMS standard, or maybe depending upon what we're allowed to do as planning board at that point. You know, when we start down with developers, there's a lot of pressure. And, and then it becomes a, it becomes a David and Goliath situation where how much, how much legal money do you want to spend not to allow you to do what I want to do? And in a town like Derry, or a town like Newport or Claremont, those guys don't have a chance. But in a town like Croydon, I don't know if we have a stomach for a hundred thousand dollar loss, right? So, so it's, it's one of those deals where you try to put as many protections in for the town as you possibly can. And let's be honest, we don't have a lot. So this helps us to tighten up, um, you know, I, I know, I'm living here long enough now, I know everyone does like roads, I get it. I understand it, I really do, I understand you. But this time, it's gonna kill you. It's gonna hurt. Twenty-dollar tax rate would hurt. It just would. A development that goes in that causes the fire department to be over, over their limit, and the town now has to increase our budget for them, that's gonna hurt. And the whole idea behind this is to do steady, steady growth so that it's controllable, manageable, and we can all afford it. To put up with what that world is, because unfortunately, we can sit here and, and hope that property taxes somehow go away. I don't know how they're gonna do that in New Hampshire because it's the only revenue item they have. So, I, I could, we could, we could get them away, but it would have to be another three-letter word. So, the problem, yes, sir?
I got a question, but what about, uh, we're talking about home, health businesses, government-led management, all day, you know, the growth shoots. Where are you protecting on that kind of stuff, garden planning?
I, I, when can you start building? So, commercial development is very much desired by the select board and. Um, commercial, commercial development adds to the tax basis, it's not a burden to the tax basis. Um, Route ten is getting upgraded right now, the three-phase. There's room on Route ten for industrial complexes, industrial, uh, centers. There's, there's a couple of really nice places up there that you could build into the, into the hill and put some nice industrial office and nice manufacturing space. We would love that. Yeah, we would love that. So this does not, this doesn't do anything on the commercials.
Well, I don't know that that was reflected in the master plan survey either, people favored small manufacturing, but not so much.
No, I thought they had small manufacturing, it was okay.
I don't think it was a high percentage response.
But again, the growth management ordinance is, is also something that can be changed, that could, that could be added to, um, the plan to only have a certain amount of commercial permits.
You don't, so we have two zones in Croydon, we have village district and we have rural residential.
That's it. Oh, no, we have three, conservation.
Conservation. So, the reality is, the only commercial development that this planning board would allow is a law of Route ten. That's it. Well. Nothing in industrial building on Laverne Hill.
If we keep our tax rate down, the businesses are gonna wanna move in.
Well, the problem, right, but the, kind of, the issue with that is, you would think that, but then the problem becomes infrastructure. So it becomes power, it becomes water, it becomes sewer. And so now you're restricted in how many, what businesses are really gonna come. Because, and they're gonna be small, you're not gonna get an industrial, you're not gonna get a fifty thousand square foot hypertherm. Because they need three-phase power, they need water, they need sewer, because they have treatment plants, they have stuff they have to run through, it has to, can't go into stuff. So there's certain manufacturing or certain businesses, automobile, whatever you could get. But there's no desire to the planning board, nor would there be approval for anything that would aesthetically change, dramatically aesthetically change Route ten. I don't see that happening. The opportunity for that really was when interest rates were two, three percent. And it didn't happen then.
So just to clarify, there is not an existing protection, and there would not be an extra.
Correct. Correct.
Twenty more permits. Hypothetically.
Hypothetically, within the zones that they're allowed. Which is not, which is not next door to you or my, on my zone.
And I don't think we honestly really discussed that too much.
This, the, the ordinance is pretty, says that in the zones pretty.
I think there was some of that competition coming out for the.
Oh.
Okay, yeah, there's no, there's no restriction on it.
I think a lot of people would be sure for, like, having, like, get better to survey, they're like, no, no, no. Well, if we explained it a little bit better, not, uh.
Yeah. But, but I also do think that the, the zoning board would have to be involved in any sort of application for commercial development along Route ten, because it's not zone for them. We don't have commercial zones.
No, we don't.
It's, it's what the planning board considers right for commercial development. So it's our, kind of our commercial zone that we think of, but from the, on the rulebook, only two zones. Village District, that's residential. And rural residential, which is residential and common rail. So, the zoning board, we'd have to go to the, so if anybody comes in to kind of tie your, to kind of see why businesses probably haven't. Any business to come in, they would have to go to the zoning board and have to get a variance. And the variance would be to have this commercial building in the village district or the rural residential. And that would come to the planning board as well, and the planning board would say, we don't want commercial. And that would come to the planning board as well, and the planning board would say, we don't want commercial, because that was in precedent, that if it's a rural residential along Route ten, it could be a rural residential on Croydon Center. So we can't do that, we've gotta create a new zone. Now, that's gonna go to the voters. That's a zoning change, it's gotta go before the voters. So we would now carve out a zone along Route ten where this guy wanted to build his building, and we'd say, okay, this is gonna be our partial zone, and you'd have to vote on it. Everybody would have to vote. So right now, folks, we can't do that. The businesses that are along there, they can end for whatever reason they did.
So what's not, are there?
Hmm.
I think it's welcome to be. All commercial.
The zoning ordinance is forty-five years old, that's the next. That's next.
That's next. Because there. In my opinion, there should be, um, commercials only. A similar later, if you don't have a. Everyone develop and be my.
Chairman.
Yep.
The following regulations apply to the village districts. They are mainly districts of residences, commercial establishes, establishments, community buildings, and neighborhood businesses. So the permitted uses are any use that is permitted in the commercial zone or rural resident, rural residential zone, say that fast. Um, neighborhood stores for the retail sale of new goods, neighborhood service establishments, including appliance repairs, clothes cleaners, self-service laundries and barbers, tourist homes and existing buildings, owner occupied two-family dwellings, apartments constructed by interior alterations to an existing building, offices, banks, indoor theaters, and other places of public assembly, manufacturer of goods for retail sale on the premises, including bakeries, print shops, and newspapers, antique shops, restaurants, community buildings, accessory buildings, and the uses, churches, auditoriums, and other buildings for public assembly.
Wow. The village district is this big.
I think it's off the ground.
Yeah.
And it's really, it's all a little made up.
Yeah.
But, correct.
And it overlaps a little bit on Croydon Flat.
Right.
So.
It was there, all, but it's not, so. Okay. Everybody else good? Yep.
How does this, is it down here now, K?
They were probably either waived or grandfathered, I, I have no idea. I don't, I don't ever guess what happened in Croydon.
Just waiting for the next ball.
So I don't guess. I don't look it up. And they don't have very good planning files, so. I can't. I can't, uh, open these hands up. Yeah, exactly. All right, folks, we good? Good? Everybody, all right, we're gonna get on with it. Larry, good evening.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can you see me?
We can't see you.
All right, let me try something. How about now?
No.
Okay, I thought I turned the camera on, but okay, nevermind.
All right, did you, uh, you got, you should've got the email from me earlier today for the two documents that we're looking at?
Yeah, I got, I didn't read them, but I've got the ones that we had from the time before, so.
So what we did, and we'll start with the CIP. So it's exactly the same as it was on November the fourth. Except what we've done is, we have, we, I need, I need to figure out page numbers on this, too.
I'll, I, I will do the words, you have the one.
All right, thank you. Okay, so under product, project descriptions, we had to add the Croydon historical tax rate, which we put in for twenty-year historical tax rate, and the rebound years that were associated with that rate. That's one document in there that shows the spikes where we had taxes as low as eleven dollars and eighty cents over the twenty years, and then as high as, um, nineteen dollars and fifty-eight, fifty-six cents. Um, but you can see that, like, in two thousand, and this is one of the things that the, that this will smooth out a little bit, is you've got a two thousand thirteen tax rate of eighteen twenty-four, and then a two thousand fourteen of twelve, sixty-four, then it goes up four bucks, then it goes down a buck, then it goes down, then it stays the same, goes up a buck, and then goes up three and a half bucks. So, you know, that's a, that's a little tough for people when you're budgeting stuff. Because they don't find out what the tax rate is until, oh, yeah, the week before Christmas.
Having a long-term, um, description of things that, a long-term budget items, list of budget items will be so helpful.
Okay, and then what we did was, um, Aaron provided some information from the budget committee, where, um, we now have town buildings and transfer station, highway department, and the other stuff. And so my question for you, Ken, is, we have town buildings, paint the town hall exterior, improve building installation, update electrical system, what is your, your ransom needs? Do you have an idea?
I will take this to the board of selected meeting on the ninth and ask them. It's not something I'm gonna do by myself, I'm gonna be a board decision.
Then I need the transfer station information.
And I, that is a board decision.
Okay. Can you just make sure that you show that the, um, because the numbers are, like, really specific on, which makes it easier to pick a number.
Yeah.
Yep.
Actually, what I'll do is I'll take the, the ranking numbers and the areas that are all for town municipal buildings, and send them to Melissa at the admin, and have her dispose them, so that perhaps we can get them back.
Sure.
So.
Okay. Because these are all, these are all three and four rents and five rents, so they're not something that needs to be done immediately.
No, we had already spoken, um, regarding the exterior of the town hall, because if there's all in the back, it needs some work, and so, yep.
All right, and then, um, fire department, police department, conservation committee, yeah.
One comment on the highway stuff.
Yep.
I noticed, um, you didn't have the miles here. It says X, X miles.
Where?
Um, first line in the highway department.
Yeah, what is the total miles?
I had in my spreadsheet twenty point six one.
Okay.
I don't know if that smells right to you, but.
I walk.
We had the miles of every single road, that's what it adds up to.
Okay.
And then, um, you got Croydon Turnpike and Route ten lists local state, but I also, I had a note here that Reed's Mill is also. By the state, so.
Reed's Mill, but we, we do some, we do winter maintenance.
Right.
Yeah.
But I wasn't sure if that would be listed there.
Yeah, let's, let's, actually, let's put that in there, so Croydon Turnpike Road, what's the other one?
Reed's Mill.
Reed's Mill.
We just took them turn right and saw.
I can have that in. Okay. All right, and then if you look at the highway, um, you have different dates, or repaving of Blover Hill, paving Gas Street, Oldham Hill, Wright Lane. You know, as an example, repaving of Lovren Hill is in for twenty twenty-six, but it's a third, it's a number three rank, so you guys aren't gonna want, most likely not gonna do that. And I'm wondering if maybe what we should do, because we're gonna be voting on this in twenty-six, is align the twenty twenty-six tags with the budget proposal that you're doing. Right, so you've got that one, and you've got the critical repairs to the existing headquarters, which I think you guys did put in.
Um, I don't think the committee's talked about the warrant articles yet.
Okay.
There is a draft circulating, but we haven't actually gone through it.
Yeah, I don't know if seventy-five hundred is, oh, it's gonna be a warrant, okay.
But once we have that finalized list, then we should cross-check it with this and make sure.
Yeah, so budget and select board should sanitize your seventy-five hundred and make sure it's enough. All right, and then your purchase of a mower is, if that needs to be in the budget for twenty-six.
Yeah, we won't. That's for the roadside mower.
So that's a contract thing?
Yeah.
So that shouldn't even be in here.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
Different pieces of, different things floating around then, because in the committee meetings, they were saying it's a urgency one and we have to buy one.
We don't have one, yeah. We don't have one, it's definitely an urgency, we've been talking about it, we have some.
But I thought you got a quote that was like.
Yeah, we got one that's crazy cheap.
Yeah.
So again, that will.
I'm taking it up. I'm gonna take that one off. Um, twenty twenty-six, yeah, that one. Okay, so that was the only, that's the only three, so one of them's gone already, so that's good. Did anybody see anything with this? I know you guys just got it this morning. Um, but what I'm gonna do, like I've done with the other stuff, is, um, take a couple days to read it over. I'm gonna send it off to the attorney on Friday. Give you guys a couple of days just to get back to me with anything you have, and see that we should correct it or we don't. So.
Yeah, let me take it, agitate it, put the margins in.
So you can correct the file that I sent you and then send it back to me as real as.
Yeah.
All right. So that's that one. Growth management ordinance, the only thing we changed on this was I added in, uh, under growth in Croydon, that the number of the mi- major, minor subdivisions approved over the last five years averages less than three, except for twenty twenty-four and twenty-four six. Um, that was in here for, this is all part of the justification. And then I added, um, a table on page three where you have the number of building permits issued over the last six years. So what is that, eighteen, twenty-four, thirty, forty? So whatever forty divided by six is, is talking eight point. Eight point four. Point three, two five. Forty divided by six. You really doing this to me?
Yes, six point six six.
Six point oh six is the average.
You're asking.
So we're, we are above the average. Right?
Yes.
By two. So that, I think, is okay. And then that's all the change I made to that document. So that was, that's the same as it was on November four. We need a, uh, and added here to there.
And the question that I have here on this one is, do these definitions on page three match the definitions in our zoning ordinance? And do they have to? Is this a standalone?
This is a standalone.
Okay, just would you make sure when it goes to the attorney, town attorney?
So she had, she had a change that she had done on one of these, that she said it needs to match the zoning, and we changed it. And I think that was the undivided parcel land one, single block. But yes, I will, so you wanna make sure they match the match?
Yes.
Current ordinance.
Do they have to match for doing it? Zone ordinance for can it be a standalone definition?
Okay. That's the change. That's what we got. So not only do we have special exception on the last item, exception by select board, oh, I added that. Exception by select board, John wants, by the way, a number sets, he wants, um, six change to the ordinance be declared by a court of competent jurisdiction. You got, not appropriate. Then the next one is accept, exception by select board, I don't know if we need this, Kim, because if you look at page four, uh, letter F, this ordinance shall not apply to the repair, replacement, reconstruction, or alteration of any existing structure, so long as the new dwelling units are created here, thereby. It also does not apply to ADUs or multifamily homes where permitted.
So currently in our zoning ordinance, multifamily home is created by changing an existing home. If that changes, how does that apply? Can you build a multifamily home, and that's considered one?
It's not included, it's not new.
That's a new.
Yeah. Repair, replacement, reconstruction, or alteration of any existing structures.
I think we need to, we, we don't have any multifamily homes in town, so we wouldn't.
We don't have any legal multifamily homes either.
Yes, that is true. That is true.
Yeah, so.
Multifamily to me would be multiple kitchens with singular entrances.
Yeah, you don't have any legal multifamily homes, you know.
So do we want to leave it that way? We're just eliminating multifamily. Does that probably carry over from Georgia?
A dwelling unit is a single unit which provides complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provision for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. Let me ruminate on that one for a minute.
Okay.
Um.
Let me take it up.
We might be fine without the select board exception, except.
Well, you can leave it in there, it's redundant, but you can leave it in there. The attorney will say it's redundant.
I like redundancy, I'm, and I'm a built-in suspendance kind of thinker.
Yeah, I, I don't trust them. Anybody seen anything else?
No, I think that's, no. No, I'm, I'm, I don't wanna sit here and read the whole thing.
No, I don't. There's, there's nothing glaring.
No.
Larry, you got anything?
I do not, I've got it in front of me, and it's pretty much what we had the last time around. Looks good to me.
Letter J, there's section. Or sorry, not section.
Three. J.
Yeah.
So more relations needed for subdivisions. Oh, you know what, that needs to go.
Yep.
Needs to go.
Good catch.
That's a note. On the old one. That's a good catch. How's Texas, Larry?
Uh, cool and rainy right now, but, uh, it'll get better.
We had eight inches of snow yesterday.
Good for you, glad I'm not there.
It's seven on Sunday. I just keep reminding you every month.
And, and I'll, I'll give you a weather forecast when it's, you know, sunny and eighty-two.
And we can mute you, Larry.
I beg your pardon?
We can mute you, Larry.
Okay, so what I would like to do, um, is I would like to schedule a public hearing for January seventh.
You look in the calendar?
Yeah. So Wednesday, January seventh. Last day to post and publish notice for our first public hearing on zoning amendments. Um, first day to position zoning amendments. Yeah, I know, I'm just.
Yeah, we're just, yep, okay.
So, um, yeah, so the last day is, the post is January fourth, because I want Melissa to be able to, or Sharon, excuse me, sorry, to be able to post this in the shopper and where, where out, where it needs to be posted, which I'll get guidance from legal. Yep, for this. Okay, and then the second public hearing would be held, um, on January.
Twenty first.
Twenty-first, if needed. Then on our meeting on February the fourth, we're gonna do a second invitational to talk about the two ordinances in detail.
Do that again.
Um, February the fourth would be our next regular planning board meeting, and I'm gonna do a lower invite. Only we're gonna make it a little more publicized on the website, people that may have questions. Than any other. I wanna make it available.
Question, Jim?
Yes.
When do we vote on, um, you know, acceptance of these and the forwarding of them and that sort of thing?
Yeah, March, uh, tenth.
Okay, so that's.
We'll vote on them on, uh, January fourth, Larry.
The fourth, okay.
Public hearing will finalize them, and we'll vote to accept them, and.
Okay.
The warrants are all to be written, because we gotta have them done by.
January seventh.
Right, correct, January seventh, we'll vote on it.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
You should have the warrant.
Yeah.
You should have the warrants written for that night.
Yes.
That we have.
Okay.
Okay? Any other business?
No.
If there are no other questions on the two documents, no other changes, see any changes in the next forty-eight hours, email. Then I'm gonna send these off to Jane on Friday, mid, midday. She has to believe. Um, alright, with all that.
Did we discuss our next meeting?
Our next meeting will be on, uh, January the seventh. And there'll be a public hearing on that date as well. On that, what? See it, did it?
Yeah, I did.
See it? That's. Your off. I think I used your card when you sent that. Oh, no, you didn't. Alright. I want to tell them what your return.
I made the most money of them.
All those in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
We are returned. Thanks, Larry.
Bye, Larry. Thank you.
Good night. Hey, Aaron?
Merry Christmas, Larry.
Hey, thank you. Aaron, can you hear me? Guess not.
Yes, he can. Yes.
Oh, he can.